Great. Hi, welcome everyone to the Planning Commission meeting, April 6, 2015. It's called to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Vaterlos.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Chair Gordon.
Here.
Commissioner Cooper.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Thank you, Lee. We're going to do a salute to the flag right now. Commissioner Cooper, could you lead us in that?
Can we unblock the flag before we start?
What flag?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Cooper. So, we're moving on to administrative business, and we have an agenda here. And do I see a motion to approve the order of agenda? I do. Commissioner Cooper?
I move that we approve the order of the agenda.
And do I have a second? Yes, Commissioner Vaterlos?
I'll second that.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that motion passes. What are we, two, five, zero? Now, we have minutes from a prior meeting, but I don't know if we have a quorum to, of sitting commissioners who were present at that meeting to vote on it. Has, do we?
Let's see, there's, I wasn't here.
No quorum.
No quorum? Okay. So, I will skip on that, and we'll push that over to a
That's correct.
A subsequent meeting. And in terms of needing a liaison to a city council meeting, is that necessary, or?
It is not no liaison is needed.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Okay, so we're going to move on to, we have one consent item and two matters for public hearing. First, we're going to do the consent item, and that is an extension of permits for the expansion of an existing 38-room Holiday Inn Express, including an addition of 44 guest rooms and 2,010 square feet of retail space at 519 Nick Gust Way in Pacifica. The recommended action is to grant the one-year extension. Can we have a staff report, Lee?
Mr. Chair, I know staff report is needed because it's a consent item, so if, you know, the commission wants to approve it, then they may so.
Great. This does seem like a pro forma request. It's their first, it's their first request for an extension. Is there any desire for deliberation? Nope? Okay, great. Do I need to make a motion? Yes, okay.
Motion to approve.
Great. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We do. Commissioner Cooper?
I also got a motion.
Great. Please vote. And that passes five to zero. Okay, we are going to move on to the, to the first agenda item in our public hearing, which is a specific plan, SP-151-15, filed by Javier Chavaria, agent for the applicant property owner Sonora Shores, LLC, to construct a 4,238-square-foot, two-story, single-family residence on Lot 2, which is part of the development known as Harmony at 1, located at Fassler and Roberts Road. The proposed action is to approve as condition. Do we have a staff report, Lee?
Thank you, Mr., Commissioner Gordon, and members of the commission. On October 15, 2007, the Planning Commission approved the Harmony at 1 project, including a tentative subdivision map development plan, use permit, site development permit, subject to city council approval of a rezoning for the property. The city council approved the rezoning on November 13, 2007. An environmental impact report was also certified for the project. The project approval letter is included as Attachment A and contains the conditions of approval. The November 13, 2007 city council report, staff report, is also included as Attachment B and includes a copy of the Planning Commission staff reports and meeting minutes of the whole project. The applicant is seeking approval of a specific plan to construct a 4,238-square-foot, two-story single-family residence, exclusive of a 560-square-foot, three-car garage on Lot 2, which is part of the Harmony at 1 subdivision. The 2,395-square-foot ground floor is on a split level with a garage on the upper tier and the main living area on the lower tier. The second 1,842-square-foot floor plan will accommodate three bedrooms, three bathrooms, and outdoor deck balcony area totaling approximately 1,761 square feet. The maximum height of the proposed residence is approximately 28.5 feet. Landscaping consisting of native plant and guild colonies and interlocking permeable pavers are considered, are proposed around the perimeter of the house. Native mofree sod is also proposed for lawn area at the rear of the property at approximately 700 square feet. A mitigation measure for approval for the Harmony at 1 residential development requires that all homes be designed and constructed using coastal green architecture. In accordance with the design guidance and the project-specific design guidelines, the proposed single-family residence would be, is designed with a coastal green architectural style, which is intended to blend into the proposed site topography. The home would have a low profile that blends with natural landscape and is designed to align with the contours of the hill. Additionally, the building pad of the, was lowered to minimize the visual impacts of the home, especially from the south. A berm that is approximately 3 feet in height is also being incorporated at the south side of the, of the property in order to further minimize the visual impacts. Building material and colors would, you know, are required to blend in with the natural environment. The native plant landscaping would be used to preserve the natural landscape appearance of the hillside. The applicant is also committed to incorporating green design principles into the projects, which are also required as a condition of approval. Staff has prepared a table under Attachment C, which lists each condition and how the proposed Lot 2 has come, home will comply. Conditions not applicable to this lot or applicable to the overall site and addressed with, are addressed with the grading improvement plans have been omitted, but the numbering has not been modified in order to remain consistent with the project approval letter under Attachment A. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Do we, do we have any questions for staff, or should we move on to the applicant's statement? Okay, Commissioner Coop, was that Cooper or Campbell?
Cooper.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yeah, I was looking at the attachment here. I noticed that the first page of the attachment has Attachment A. I would assume that all the conditions are the same that were previously approved by the commission. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any more lights from Commissioner, so we're going to move on at this point in time for the applicant, if he wants to make a statement and address the commission. You've got 10 minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. Javier Chavaria with JZE, local design firm. I have a small presentation if you would like to see it. I have some pictures and some things that will help you visualize a little better what we're proposing.
I would love it. Thank you. Which microphone is that?
Give me a couple of seconds, I will have it going. Well, Harmony at 1, a sustainable and environmental-friendly development. That is not just a line. That is our motto. That is what we are here to do. This has been a project that has been 10 years in the making. Project was conceptualized in 2005. It was tentatively approved in 2007. The final map, finally, after the big recession, approved in 2013. In 2014, we did start breaking ground and started all the infrastructure, and we are here today to seek approval so that we can start in 2015, the first of the homes. In California, we have beautiful construction. There are some beautiful homes in the coast with modern architecture. I have a couple of examples from Carmel, Steenston Beach, nice modern design that are the norm on coastal architecture these days. But here, we have the most beautiful site in the West Coast. Therefore, we have the obligation to design the best homes in the West Coast. We cannot do anything less than that. From 2007 to this date, green architecture has changed. In 2007, green architecture was a new thing. Developers thought, well, that's an imposition, that's, I don't want to do it, it's just going to cost me money. In 2007, there was not a green building code. Today, we have a building code that incorporates clear definitions of what green architecture is, but most important, in 2015, green architecture is a need, is what people want. The people that are going to be buying this home will not be buying them unless they are meeting the green standards of conserving energy and making a better living. The EPA has issued a list of what actually constitute a green building, and that has to do with energy-efficient building, using environmentally preferable materials, reduction of waste and toxics, improve the air quality, do a sustainable development, and if possible at all, use some renewable energy. How do we make a building energy efficient? Well, we reduce leaks and draft by using quality windows, quality products, and superb craftsmanship. We keep consistent temperatures with properly-designed heating and ventilation system. We use durable materials. We reduce the use of energy by using Energy Start appliances. We use cool roofs. Every home is going to have solar panels, and to not only reduce the energy at home, we are providing each home with an electric car charger so that we can give every owner an additional incentive to go green. Some of the materials that we're using in the homes are going to be structurally insulated panels, engineered lumber, concrete with fly ash, glass and steel, sustainable siding materials, pavement pavers, and there is a substantial longer list that I don't think is necessary to go there. Some of the highlights of the home, we're going to use retaining walls that are going to be poor without the needs of wasting on forms. They're going to be shot grit. We're going to use durable cool roofing, solar panels, expensive windows to increase the effectiveness of the daylight and balance out the use of energy for illuminating the home, but also for heating that home. We're going to have a gray water system and a rainwater harvesting system. Energy Star appliances, water-conserving fixtures, and most important, a whole-house ventilation that will manage the indoor quality. Pacifica adopted the green ordinance that classifies this home, because of the size and the cost, as a Level 4 with a minimum of 100 green points. We are proposing to exceed that, not just to meet it, but exceed it with at least 150 points. Our goal is not just to meet the standards, but is to raise the bar and set a new standard. We want to have an excellent building from the architectural, structurally, but most important, from the environmental standpoint. The design guidelines, as staff clearly mentioned, includes a low profile of the homes, the materials to use glass and steel, align the homes with the contours, use the coastal architecture. I think we have achieved that. I think we have very carefully looked at what's approved, at what was approved by the previous commission, and I think we've done a good job matching those conditions, and not just matching, but probably improving them. This was an exhibit that was used when the original buildings were approved. Right there, we can see how the house on Lot Number 2 would look. Now, this was a very particular vantage point. This is a low area down on Roberts Road in front of Lot 11. If you're sitting there, you're about 280 feet lower than where the building is, and at the height of the naked eye, basically the hillside will cover the home. Well, this is what we're proposing now. The home is going to be exactly at the same location as it was approved, and actually almost 24 inches lower on the roofline. We prepare this view standing on Taco Bell and looking at the home. We can see the massiveness of the condominium buildings on the left, and we see the low-profile and subtle appearance of the home that we're proposing. This is what was approved, a scene from behind. It was a design that incorporated natural materials, plentiful windows, and a nice setting on the top of the hill. This is what we're proposing. We're proposing a home that is a little lower than the original one, that is nested on the hillside, and that it blends with the landscaping by using warm colors and natural native planting that will enhance the appearance of the home. This is what was approved, a scene from Roberts Road. This is what we're proposing. So, both views, we, original design was a conceptual design. We've taken it a step forward to incorporate all those elements of green architecture that we are so concerned about. For landscaping, we're using native plants. We're going to use a smart moisture sensing system so that we can control when and how irrigation is done. We're going to use recycled concrete terrace and walk pavers. We're going to use permeable driveway pavers so that we can control and manage correctly the storms, the water from the storms. Very hard to see from here, but this landscape plan shows this is going to be permeable pavers, recycled pavers, native lawn in here, and all the plants in here that our landscape architect is, is present here. If you have any question for her on the type of planting, the colonies that will be promoted, and how the site will be as native as it gets. The contouring in here shows the berms that we created around the home to rise the elevation of the grade and minimize the appearance of the home from the southern exposure. And here is the front elevation. This is the home that we are proposing. We believe that the home fits in the hillside. It steps up and down the side of the hill. The landscape is compatible with the home. This is a view from a higher perspective, just to show how wonderful the view and the location is. This will be the rear facade, where it shows the southern exposure, the tremendous amounts of windows that is going to help with keeping our home lit and warm. That's how you will see it from the conservation easement. And finally, I just want to leave you with that image in there of a beautiful home that is going to make Pacifica proud, that is going to make us as the designers and the builder very proud of the improvements that we're making to our town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have, are there any questions for the applicant? I see several questions. Okay, just hang out there for a sec, Javier. Commissioner Campbell?
Hi, Javier. So, I was actually on the Planning Commission when we voted to approve this project, and I'm happy to see it come back. And as a preliminary matter, I'd like to commend you on, it seems, meeting what we sought for this project when we approved it back in 2007. So, overall, it looks good.
Thank you.
I had one question. Could you clarify the LEED standard certification? How exactly that's going to work?
Yes. The ordinance reads that you can, that the building can be either LEED-certified or have 100 green points. We are choosing to go with the green point architecture. It's easier, it's less expensive to manage, but it does not lower the bar. Every element that is needed for this home to be gold-certified is incorporated on this home. The only thing that we're doing by going green point rated is a system that is more manageable, that it will save probably $30,000 to $40,000 on documentation and paperwork, but that does not mean that the quality will be less.
Okay, thank you. I might have another question on that later, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you. I'm very excited, actually, about this development taking place. It's been a long time. I see the infrastructure up there, as everybody else does, and I think it's a wonderful addition to our community. One of the things that I have a concern about, which I saw in one of your photos, was the, you had an overhead light, it looked like, and I'm just a little concerned about projecting too much light over that site, so it attracts people to the area rather than blends in more with the landscaping. So, if you went back on your slides, I think it was the one before this, I did see a pole to the, right there to the right. I don't know if that's a light, or I don't know what it is, but I, just as a side of pound, there's, we go through all this planning and design for less impact, and then I see a light, and I'm like, oh, wait a minute.
No, that's the person preparing the renderings trying to get cute. It is not intended, none of the homes are going to have any isolated light poles. All the lighting will be low pollution downwards-oriented, and the only lights on poles are going to be the ones on the street already approved.
Perfect. Thank you. One thing that I, you know, I did like to see, and I'm glad you brought up the other photos of some of the other communities, and having all that green grass they had out there as in front, and you've really blended in with the natural landscaping in this design to avoid that and to really take pride in what landscape we have in Pacifica, which I think is wonderful. The other comment I'm just going to put out there is that there was, I do have a neighbor up the street of mine who is putting in a gray water system for, to use as landscaping water, which is something, I know it's not required in the permit, but I think that it's also a very interesting idea, but that's just aside, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Javier. How you doing? Just a couple of questions to go back to that LEED certification. Now, in the paper we received, it was basically restating about to design and construct and attain all the points necessary to achieve a LEED gold certification at minimum and platinum certification whenever possible. So, from what I heard, then, you will not be attaining, actually attaining, the LEED certification, but you'll, or the certificate, but you'll be qualifying for it at that point, correct?
Absolutely.
Now, that brings to the next question. With LEED, there's actual people that will come and check and, you know, keep track and count of all the points and everything. Who will be doing that on this project?
An independent qualified green-rated consultant.
Okay. That was kind of where I was going to, to find out who is going to be responsible for, not saying there is anything wrong, but to assure, I guess would be the right word.
I understand. There will be an independent raider on the project.
Through the chair, actually, staff will be, at the applicant's expense, staff will be engaging a qualified raider who will be reviewing the building plans and making sure that everything is as conditioned.
Thank you.
It's a condition of approval.
Thank you. Are there more questions? Yes? All right. Commissioner Vaterlos?
Thank you. I'm glad to see this project coming forward also. Just a small question. It's talked about aluminum windows, and to me, aluminum windows on the coast are kind of negative thing. Is that part of the green standards to put in the aluminum windows instead of something that's more sustainable vinyl wood?
There are aluminum windows and there are aluminum windows.
Okay.
The higher-quality windows are normally made of more durable and stronger type of aluminum. They're better on preventing draft, they're better on deformation. It's a better product.
Okay. Not your 50-year-old aluminum windows. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell?
Just Commissioner Cooper's remark about the gray water systems. I just wanted to clarify, I think the, all homes are required to have a gray water system according to the approvals, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's in there.
It's in there.
It is 22, like, third page towards the bottom.
Are we good?
Thank you, yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Campbell. Okay, I think we're good for now. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for your presentation. It was lovely.
Thank you, Commissioners.
At this point, we're going to open it up to a, to the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak on the matter can do so. They have three minutes. I have a feeling that many of these cards are for the next project, so I, but I will still go through them. Harmony, here we go. Neil Schwartz? You've got three minutes to speak, sir.
I think I could do it faster than that. My name's Neil Schwartz. I represent the developer. I am with Cobal Banker and also the Realtor, and I'm also, right now, because we don't have any homes sold, the president of the Homeowners Association. I want to say something about the developer, because everybody has, I've gotten feelings that the developer is coming into the town and just taking away. This developer, besides just doing this project, wants to give back to the community, and in doing so, is helping to develop, and the planning department and other city officials already know about it, is bringing to Pacifica the assisted living center that the city needs so badly, and we are just closing escrow on that this next week and shall be planning to build that. So, not only is he doing this project, but he's helping do something that the city needs very badly. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Kevin Russell?
Hello, my name's Kevin Russell. My parents moved to Pacifica in 1970, so hard to believe, I'm a 45-year Pacifica resident. And I'm the owner of Centered Construction, who's, the project sponsor has hired, the contractor doing the infrastructure work currently. Worked very hard to get that contract, and they have now assured me I have a contract to build this house. So, I'm here to let you know that this sponsor has committed to me as a local. We have hired local subs as much as possible to build the infrastructure, and will continue to do so on the house. Secondly, Centered Construction's done quite a few green building projects over the years. We have qualified staff that knows how to do green building, and everything I see on this home, we've done many projects that meet LEED gold and the green building standard, and everything that I see in this home meets the highest standard of anything we've built. That's it.
Thank you, sir. If those are all the cards that I have for this project, if there's anybody else who would like to speak on this project, you may do so, just be sure to fill out a card and, after you're done, and bring it over to the table over there. I see, that must be Courtney coming. Okay.
Actually, I did give my card to, okay. Good evening, Commissioners. I am Courtney Conlon, and I'm here representing myself as a very proud Pacifican for the past 38 years. I am vested in this community, as I have three generations living here. So, this project, I have been walking up what I call Broccoli Hill for the last maybe 10, 15 years, loving every minute of it, loving the open space, and at the same time, when I heard that this development was coming to Pacifica, I was like, wow, this will really help Pacifica to be put on the map. And over the years, I've seen a lot of development of beautiful homes built throughout Pacifica. The Harmony at 1 project just looks amazing, and as a resident of Pacifica, I wholeheartedly support it for the following reasons. Additional property tax revenue for the city, which we all know our city desperately needs with just the prices of the homes alone. Increased exposure for Pacifica, as it will generate great synergy, providing a wonderful opportunity to have an amazing housing, houses that have breathtaking views, and hopefully this project will appeal to those in the industries of biotech and tech. this project will appeal to those in the industries of biotech and tech companies, and these are people that can live and work in San Francisco, easy access, easy access to the peninsula, and of course, down through Silicon Valley. I also really believe that this will help increase customers to our visitor-serving restaurants and businesses, as well as patronizing all of the services that Pacifica businesses have to offer. So this project was approved in 2007, as Javier has said, and let's, let's move forward, let's not, you know, go back and forth and stop another amazing project for Pacifica. Let's be forward-thinking, and I really, really strongly urge, as a resident of Pacifica for the past 38 years, that the Commissioners please approve this environmentally conscientious project. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience want to speak on this project?
Also, just add one more thing. Just really quickly.
Okay, 30 seconds. I'm just kidding, go ahead.
...negotiated today with Tesla, and if everybody knows about the new battery system that's gonna take homes off the grid, Tesla has just about okayed with us to put their battery pack, this new system, into every one of the homes up there, so that with the solar panels on the roof and these battery packs, most of these houses will not be on the grid.
Wow, okay. That's interesting. So, I do not see any hands, nor are we, and we're all done with the cards, so I am gonna close, yeah, I'm gonna close the public hearing. According to process, the applicant has three minutes to rebut all of those speakers who spoke out so vociferously against the project. I'm just kidding. You do have three more, you have three minutes to take the floor, Javier, and say whatever you'd like.
Just wanted to thank all the people that participated, but most importantly, thank staff for a wonderful job that they've done in guiding us, in helping us to come where we are, and I thank you for your time and your appreciation of our project.
Very good. Okay, with that, I'm gonna bring the discussion back to the Commissioners, and we'll have some deliberation, and then we will hopefully have a resolution. Commissioner Campbell?
All right, well, again, I think I may be the only Commissioner here who actually voted for this project the first time around, and I'm glad to have done so. And looking at what was done here, oh, was someone else? No, no. Looking at what was done here, you know, if you look at the conditions of approval, I think they really did do a good job of meeting, you know, what the Commission was looking for and what the Council was looking for back in 2007. I've only got one item, although it's kind of a big one, and it is the matter of LEED certification, and I just, you know, want to hear from my fellow Commissioners, and maybe from the city or from the planning department about that. When we approved this project, it was, there were an enormous amount of public interest, there was a lot of study session, dozens and dozens of speakers, hours and hours of testimony, hours and hours of meeting going on until almost midnight, and one of the big things was, how were we going to get a green certified project up on this hillside that would be, present a showcase for this community and for the city? And so the thinking was, at the time, was that LEED certification was the way to go, and, you know, we had, the letter of commitment from the developer at the time was that they were gonna require integration of LEED standards into the project based on professional advice from a LEED certified expert to achieve the highest level of LEED certification possible. And during the debate over this project, it was made clear that the developer of each home was going to at least get a LEED certification and then shoot for beyond the certification gold or higher. But that the actual certification would be obtained, and that a LEED expert would be retained to basically confirm it. So that, that's, my only concern, although it's a big one, is I'm unclear why we can't stay with the LEED certification standard that was agreed to back in 2007. It was definitely a big deal from my recollection, and I could be moved off that position if I can get some comfort on that. The Tesla battery thing sounds amazing, but I just want to understand better why we're moving off that. So, that's my comment.
Through the Chair, my understanding is that the time that this project was approved, there wasn't a green building ordinance in the city, and so the Planning Commission decided to, and probably as proposed by the applicant, to establish a LEED certification condition and requirement of the project. Subsequent to that, there was a green building ordinance adopted, and then there was the either-or language, either LEED certification or a certain point on the, the green building standard. That then sunsetted, and the state of California adopted the green building ordinance. So, so I think there's been a evolution of green building code requirements over time since then. And so I think staff felt that the intent was being met. However, we respect your, your recollection as a Commissioner who was on the commission when this was approved, and the Planning Commission can clarify the requirement, and I think you could even add a condition to this, to this house and to Lot 2 with the intent to continue to do that on the specific plans for the, for the rest of the lots, clarifying that, that is indeed the intent, is to get the LEED certification. So that's just the background.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. I too, I think this is a wonderful plan. I was on the Open Space Committee way back when this was in development, and they actually even came to us to present the Harmony at One project, and I was quite impressed by that and quite impressed by what I saw. I, I think it's a wonderful project, I think it will jump out that Pacifica is not only equal, but a step ahead of, of everybody else. And, and with these kind of projects in front of us, I, I see nothing but going up. So I, it's a great, great project. I think the house is wonderful looking, everything about is great. When they came out with them, I was a little surprised, but I'm very pleased to see the first one here in front of us. So, all that said, I, I too am a little, I won't say skeptical, skeptical's not the right word, but I would feel, I think, a little bit better if it were a certification. I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to show this as a showcase, and, and I understand the, what the staff is saying, that things have changed, but it was a big thing back then. I think it still is somewhat of a big thing, but I'm, I'm not going to condemn it for not having it, but I'm, I'm with my fellow Commissioner on, I think it, I think it would show a lot of, I don't know what the right word would be, to have the certification, but I can be swayed also. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Cooper?
I'd just like to ask a little clarifying question. I know that the city's gonna go out and look at the points that are gonna be earned from the green building, and also the developer is gonna be doing the same thing and tallying those. There will be a final report issued, however, on what, how many points he did obtain. Is that correct?
Yes, so what the plan is, is to have an additional layer of building plan check, essentially, and so I was envisioning giving, giving the, either the LEED or the green point certifier a copy of the table that staff created with another column, and so that that person, he or she, would go through and specifically state how that condition was met on the plan set.
And there'll be proper backup, I would assume, with that report that the green person will be doing, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would expect that that person would then reference what plan sheet it's on, and also any additional inspections that would be required in the field.
Okay, thank you.
So, following up on Commissioner Cooper's question, so what's the material, practical difference between proceeding as the applicant wants with just this point standard versus formal certification, practically speaking?
I am not an expert enough to tell you the difference between LEED and green building certification. My understanding is that LEED is a higher bar, and it's more expensive. So it's very expensive to go through that process and get that certification. So expensive that, when a public facility sometimes is built, they achieve, they, they achieve, they build a building to a LEED standard, but they don't actually go get the certificate because it's that expensive, but they know it's built that way, they just don't have the, the certificate in hand. And so basically, it's just two different point, point rating systems, and perhaps the applicant could, could better clarify the difference between the two.
Okay, come on up and help us out here.
Yes. The main reason that we started deviating from that is, even if we do LEED, we still have to comply with the California green building code. So we still have to go through the green point system because it's a requirement of the code. We've been reviewing the code to see if doing LEED relieves us from complying with those aspects of the, of the code, and I'm not very clear to that element, but in a conversation that I had with a building official, she said she was going to look to see if that could be done. But the bottom line is that LEED in 2007 was the only game in town. It has evolved to be more oriented towards commercial buildings and larger developments. Green points have been adopted for residential because they're more manageable, because their, their guidelines are a little easier to follow. I'd like to assure you here that by going green and not LEED, we're not giving up anything on the buildings, just a layer of bureaucracy and a layer of expense. We may think that the prices of the homes that have been advertised are up, the developer's gonna make a lot of money, well, it's been a very expensive process. Just to give you an idea on some of the requirements that we have, just in biological monitoring on site, we are north of $200,000 right now. All the requirements, we've taken every single environmental requirement very seriously, and again, we're not trying to deviate from the things, but we want to put the money where it should be put, which is in the quality of the homes.
Thank you, Javier. I'll bring the conversation back to the Commission, Commissioner Vatalas.
In the back of this packet is the green point rated checklist, and as Javier mentioned, that the standard is 100, and they're at 152 on this checklist. So I think they've well exceeded what was required in the green point rating, and I would be comfortable with the green point over the LEED.
Thank you, Commissioner Vatalas. Commissioner Campbell?
I wanted to ask the city really quick, you know, when I, you walk around downtown San Francisco and you'll, or any, or you go on the LEED website, and you'll see a lot of commercial buildings rated as LEED. What about residential homes? Javier mentioned that LEED was more geared towards commercial rather than residential. What's your take on that?
That's correct. They, I believe by popular demand, they now have a residential certification, but when LEED was first created, it was a commercial system.
But they have a residential now?
Correct.
Thanks.
So I don't see any lights. It sounds like, Commissioner Campbell, I do see a light.
Well, I just wanted, maybe that, I guess the question hasn't been posed directly to the applicant of whether they would reconsider this or not, so I just want to actually just ask the question because it never hurts to ask. And again, just reiterate that, you know, we, the reason I'm kind of focused on this was just because we had this letter of commitment saying it, that we would have that LEED certification, and hours and hours of, of public time and city time went into this condition back in 2007, and so just as a, I don't want to do a disservice to the members of the public who really spent a lot of time agreeing, you know, getting to, getting to yes on this, on this particular item. I feel like, I don't want to have wasted their time back in that day, especially when we kind of really based it on this letter of commitment, and, and also based on the representations made at the public hearing. So, saying all that, I guess I do just want to ask, just pose the question to the, to the applicant, whether they might reconsider looking at the LEED. It seems like, and I'm not an expert here on the LEED certification, but looking at the LEED, I did take a look at the website before coming here, and then looking at the green point checklist, it seems like there, if you meet the LEED, you'd meet the checklist, the green building checklist, but, I don't know, I'm gonna ask the question, so I don't know if the applicant wants to come up. Thanks.
If the Commission feels that LEED is the way to go, we obviously are not going to stop the project for that. But I'd like to reiterate that green building is not a disservice to the building or to the community. We will be more than willing to establish a condition similarly to what was done with the Houston residents just recently, that we'll do what is comparable to the requirements of a LEED certification following the requirements of green points. So we can present to staff without submitting the LEED certification points without actually going, not point, but list, without actually going through the specific process. Furthermore, we may be even willing to accept to obtain just plain certification LEED, although we're going to go substantially further with the green points. Not sure if that came across correctly?
I didn't follow that last part.
That last part says, our green point rating of 152 points is gonna be probably better than a, than a LEED gold or equal. However, trying to achieve LEED gold creates substantial amount of work. If we can have the green points and we can have LEED certification, just certification, I think that would be probably a good compromise, that establishes that the building has some LEED certification, but we're still complying with what the code is asking us to do, which is the green points.
So if I might make a suggestion, I think that the compromise that the applicant's proposing is that the project construct the home and be reviewed by the, by the plan checker to a LEED, a LEED standard, but that the actual certification process, which is the part that I think is really onerous, not necessarily be required. So I would suggest that a condition could be added, that the project construct the home on Lot 2 to LEED gold standards and at least obtain a green point rating of 152. So I think that you're achieving what the Commission originally set out to do with the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
And then the city would verify, I guess, I'm not, I'm actually comfortable with this, but the city would actually verify the LEED standard in what way?
Yeah, so, so, under the conditions of approval, we're required to hire the expertise that can do the plan check, there's a special plan check on, on these homes, at the applicant's expense. So assuming this project is approved tonight, that's gonna be the next on our to-do list, is to get somebody under contract who can do that as soon as they submit the plans, and they will be going through the conditions of approval and making sure that both the green point rating and the LEED certification, or the LEED standard is met.
I think I followed that. Did everybody follow that? Okay, okay.
I could add further also, there is a condition of approval in the, that talks about hiring a certified...
building professional, look at all that, those standards.
Okay. Is that your light? Commissioner Cooper?
Yeah, I like, the amount of points that are in the base is 100 points, is that correct? For the standards of condition for the green building code?
Yes, and I used 152 because that's what they came in with. So at least that they wouldn't go backwards.
Yeah, I mean, to me, the standard's been set at 100 points. You know, to increase that standard seems a little onerous at this point in time since the development was approved at 100. We're talking about either whether or not there's a certification or not. I mean, from, coming from public construction, coming from public buildings, San Francisco builds to a silver standard all the time. We're currently going for gold and we're going for platinum for some of our terminal projects. That process is very expensive and I do agree with that. You know, from my perspective, from the commission, I want to see the building perform to that standard because that's really what it's for. It's designed to a standard that helps the environment, it helps the landscape out, it helps for the building codes, keeps the occupant healthier, et cetera. So to me, having a certification is, to me, is a secondary concern on my part. So, you know, I don't want to make any more onerous than it already is for the builder. The standards have been set within the approval. I don't think there's any need to do any modifications, but that's my personal opinion.
Thank you Commissioner Cooper. I think Commissioner Campbell is next.
Just, I just want to again say I like the idea, just to make clear of this, of this condition of requiring the certification, just because again, we did have that commitment back in 2007. And I think it's important to honor those types of commitments when we're making approvals here. And as far as it being onerous, you know, these, these conditions of approval were known to everyone and including the new owner when they purchased this property. So this is, this is no surprise. These were the current conditions of approval that have been in place since 2007. So as far as it being onerous, I, I wouldn't agree with that. I think they're just what, what they've always been. So we're not actually, to be clear, adding anything. We're not adding any burden. This is the same thing that we approved in 2007. In fact, I think we're backtracking a little bit by not actually requiring the certification, which is fine because I think it is, actually getting the certification is more form over substance. And I agree with, in some instances. So I agree with Commissioner Cooper on that point. So anyways, thank you.
You're dying of, go ahead.
Thanks Chair. If I'm not, just to, to respect my fellow commissioner here, the standard that's in the document is 100 points and we are currently saying it's 150 now? That's different than what's in the document. Is that correct?
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. I was just using what the applicant submitted for this particular home. But you're right, it doesn't need to go above 100.
Right, so the approval is at, the document says 100 points within the document itself. So I didn't want to make it more onerous than what the current document currently says. Thank you, that's all. Thanks Chair.
Thank you.
I'll jump in here for clarification. So I thought that the compromise that was on the table was that we were going to require de facto LEED certification without actually having to go through and getting the certification itself.
Well, I mean, this is, this is for the commission to decide.
Right, but what you were proposing?
What I was proposing was a condition-
Based on what Javier was saying?
What I was, I guess I was just trying to summarize the conversation that I'm hearing. So would be adding a condition to this specific plan that the project construct the home on Lot 2 to LEED gold standards and achieve at least a 100 points on the green point rating system.
Okay, there you go.
And how does that sound Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah. Go ahead. Get my light on. That's, that sounds, that sounds good. And thanks to Commissioner Cooper for clarifying that point on the 100 rating. So I'm, I'm good with that.
I'm swinging the other way. How about over here?
Thank you Chair. I too am, am fine with the new condition put in. I think that would, and I don't want to put any extra, I understand stuff and I understand the progression of the LEED certification process, you know, more for the, you know, professional buildings and business. So I don't want to put any more effort on it, but I like the new condition. I also wanted to say congratulations. I think it's a wonderful thing, and I didn't mention it before, that you are getting local hometown contractors. I, I can't say enough how I applaud you for that. You know, we will be the ones looking to those houses. So I imagine the contractors will want to take a lot of pride in this. So, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Evans. I think, so I'm sensing consensus here. So do we want to make a motion at this point? Somebody? Commissioner Campbell?
I did not press the light, but all right.
Oh, I thought I heard you.
Oh, was that you?
No, I can push it if you like.
I'll second, after Commissioner Cooper makes the motion.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to move that the planning commissioner approves specific plan SP 151-15 by adopting the attached resolution for the proposed construction of a single-family residence on Lot 2, which is part of the Harmony at One Development, incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference, with an additional condition that the documentation to achieve LEED gold standard and to achieve at least 100 points on the green point rating.
And I'm very much happy to second this approval once again for this project.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion passes five to nothing. All right.
Congratulations.
And let's see, anyone agreed by the action of the planning commission? No, I don't say that yet. Never mind.
Move on to the next one.
I should say it? Okay. Anyone agreed by the action of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. That's enough. Okay. We are moving on to number, public hearing number two. Congratulations Javier. So, public hearing number two is a site development permit PSD-790-14, coastal development permit CDP-347-14, variance PV 513-14, and parking exception PE 160-15, filed by David Blackman and Mike O'Connell, property owners, to construct four detached studio apartments on a vacant 18,411 square foot parcel located at the 4,000 block of Palmetto Avenue. Property zoned R3G, multiple-family residential garden. The project is located in the coastal zone. Recommended SEQA status is exempt. Proposed action is to approve as conditioned. How about a staff report?
I'm going to do the staff report and then Lee and I will tag team any questions that the commission may have. So before you, it's a proposal to develop four detached studio apartments on a site in the 4,000 block of Palmetto Avenue. The site is approximately 18,400 square feet in size and is currently vacant. A large portion of the Edgemar Road right-of-way encumbers the site and there are approximately 20% slopes that run from the east to the west. The project is designated medium-density residential in the general plan and is zoned multiple-family residential garden slash coastal zone. Required project approvals include a site development permit, coastal development permit, and parking exception. A variance is also required for the size of the units and amount of usable open space proposed. The code requires 450 square feet of each and the applicant is proposing 400 square feet of gross floor area for each unit and approximately 200 square feet of usable outdoor area for each unit. The planning department and commission received several comment letters regarding this project and one in particular from Hal Bonner questioned the variance findings despite the slope and the easement encumbrance on the site, which is an unusual circumstance. The applicant has stated that the project could be modified to meet the requirements and staff has provided an optional revised motion eliminating the variance and providing revised conditions of approval requiring changes to the unit size and usable outdoor area such that the variance would no longer be required. A copy of the comment letters were also provided to the commission. However, later in the day today, after further consultation with the project engineer who is a partner on this project, the applicant would like to request that the planning commission reconsider granting the variance. The applicant and project engineer have studied increasing the size of the units and believe that additional undesirable impacts would occur. So the applicant is going to present this analysis and additional variance justification and findings this evening to the commission. Should the commission decide to grant the variance, staff suggests including appropriate additional findings in the motion. A parking exception is also requested due to the unusual circumstances that I just described. Staff believes that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to the SEQA guideline section 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures. One of the comment letters describes impacts, previous impacts found on a larger site, but does not provide specific factual information regarding the project site before you this evening. And the applicant had submitted information that there's, the site is not sensitive. So staff recommends that the commission receive public comment and approve the site development permit, coastal development permit, and parking exception and determine whether or not, whether or not to deny the variance with additional conditions or grant the variance making appropriate findings. We have to answer any questions.
Thank you. So we've, just to clarify, we've got two separate motions that you're recommending. One is, the first one we got was granting all the variances and the second one is granting the parking exception variance, but not the other two variances. Is that right?
So the parking exception, the code, within the code, there's provisions to grant an exception. So that's not truly a variance. So, so the supplemental staff report that was provided this evening would only eliminate the variances and it provides a condition that would require the units and the usable lot area to meet the code standard. But as I mentioned, I think the applicant's going to provide some additional analysis regarding that issue.
Okay, thank you. Just a word of explanation. We, we just, we typically get a staff report about a week in advance and we're able to read the material and study it. And I guess there was a lot of last-minute correspondence and exchanges between the applicant and the planning department and we just received about 12 solid pages worth of content that we are digesting as we speak. So we, our apologies, apologies if it looks like we're a little bit scrambling because, anyway. Oh, okay. So are there any other questions from the commission for, for the planning department at this time? Yes, there are. Commissioner Cooper?
I have a question in regards to the SEQA exemption and recommendation. I read the provision that you reference in Class 3, Section 15303, new construction, conversion of small structures. The part that you refer to is Item B. It says a duplex or similar multi-family residential structure totaling no more than four dwelling units. This is four detached studio apartments. So I'm curious of why that was put in as the, the exception and whether or not there was some other reference you were referring to.
I could answer that. If you read further, it also says in urbanized areas, these exemptions, this exemption applies to apartments, duplexes, and similar structures designed for not more than six dwelling units.
Okay. Commissioner Cooper, if you have more questions, we can come back to Commissioner Evans.
Thank you Chair. As previously said, we came to the table here today and what is this? I mean, we, we just received this. So I, can you break it down as to, I mean, there's several hundred pages here. So I'm, I'm feeling a little lost, honestly, now. I thought I was doing real good when I got here.
Large attachment that you're showing there is not about this project. It has to do with a project known as the bowl that was considered by the commission, city council, and coastal commission many years ago. So that relates to that project.
Okay, so, well, I saw the same address. And so I want to check on that. So disregard?
With an attachment to a comment letter?
To Mr. Bonner's letter, he attached that.
But as my previous commissioner was saying, we, we received a lot of additional information here at the very last minute. So I'm, I'm moving very cautiously here. So, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Evans. We can have more time to talk, ask the staff more questions at another time. I'm not seeing any lights right now at this point. How about we turn it over to the applicant? The applicant has 10 minutes to address the commission.
I really want to get all the people in the public to see the plans. They didn't have the time. And I put some copies out there and I handed out a few. And then the only thing that's different here is the color rendering that some of the people in the public got to see. Anybody in the public that hasn't seen the plans, there's a few more copies on the back desk that you're welcome to take. I was born in 1968 here and grew up just in the neighborhood above the condos where this project is. I remember the graded field before the condos were built. Mike and I, the owners, are lifetime residents of Pacifica who are raising our families here. The four small proposed units are not for sale and will hopefully allow our kids to raise their families here. I reached out and met with the condominium association when we started this project. In lieu of no project, they seem receptive to the small concept with living roofs. I hope they still are. Out of the population of Pacifica, Mike and I received three letters voicing concern. I think the two biggest concerns neighbors have is the preference of no project or possibility of opening the door for the fish and bowl. We are not opening the doors. We are not adding any infrastructure. The bowl still has the same environmental constraints from 10 years ago. The fish lots still need extensive infrastructure to get to them. Nothing we are doing is opening a door. While I think it's only fair that we enjoy economic use of our property similar to the other 12,000 properties in town, we know we have protected rights to use our property like others in town. We are also aware there's limitations and regulations of what is, what is particularly built there. That is why we're here tonight. The property is zoned medium-density, which requires a minimum of four units and a maximum of nine. Mike and I chose the minimum of four. We originally proposed one and it was kicked back to make the minimum of the four. We always had the intentions of four and that's what we went up to the condominium association and explained to them. The zoning allows up to three stories and Mike and I chose a minimum of one story. We can't go much less than that. Pacifica typically requires 450 square feet and has no max limit on floor size for this particular property. Mike and I chose to request a slightly under the 450 square feet. But if needed, we can make a minor modification to meet the minimum requirements. Mike and I chose to propose living roofs in one stories to protect the views of the neighbors above. That was our choice to be respectful neighbors. These were our values and these were not required by Pacifica. I did also get the letter from Hal Bonner, who happens to be a neighbor of mine. And I went and met with him this afternoon. I think I had a pretty neat conversation with the guy and I think we have a lot of similar goals. He did not get to see the plans. I gave him plans here tonight. I don't think he understood when he was protesting the variance and hopefully he can answer that for you, that the, that he was actually asking for me to make them. There was two variances requested. One is I want to go less than 450 square feet. It's typical in San Francisco for these mini dwellings to go down to 200 square feet. I had a family with, my family, when I had my first three daughters, we lived in 600 square feet and I was comfortable there. So maybe you can ask Hal tonight about the variances and how he feels about them. But the two variances were for going less than 450 square feet and was going to have half the outdoor living space. So outdoor living space is like putting a tennis court, putting lawn, or some other improvements. And I really, I'm really trying to tread lightly on the earth. And so that's where I'm at. I'm going to say- where I'm at. I'm going to save the rest of my time to answer questions. We did bring the biologist here because that big paper that you had was the staff report regarding the Fish and Bowl project 10 years ago. Those wetlands are not near my project. They're not part of my project. We are not impacting anything whatsoever, and so the biologist, at my cost, came up from Santa Cruz to answer any questions you might have. And I'm not asking you to read through that entire staff report. It is not the same property. It is not the property that I'm proposing. It's not the same project. And I wish I had a better, I tried hard to get to the condominium association to meet more of these people. When I went to the meeting, there was only three people there. I wish I got to a better, maybe in hindsight, there was a better way, but I had to fight just to get that, because there was, I had to go through their administrator in the peninsula to get to them. But I'm trying to be transparent. I'm trying to reach out. I'm trying to be, build the smallest, least impacting project I can come up with. So, I'll answer questions, and I'll let the rest of the, unless Mike's got something to say. So, that's all I have to say now. Maybe I can answer some questions along the way.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions from the commission for Mr. Blackman? I do. So, so one of the, one of the issues is the, the minimum square feet is required is 450, and you guys went 400, and you're saying you're willing to go up to 450. I'm just curious about, from your perspective, what the pros and the cons are between 400 and 450.
It's not a deal breaker. It's actually, I didn't get that precise. I think they, I just counted one up trying to get down to the inch. It was 417. If I add somewhere between four and five inches around the whole building, I can get to the 450. It's not a deal breaker, if that may. I think it was just a mistake on, just some quick reactions with, with Hal. He can speak for himself, that, that he didn't think the variance should be supported. I'm shocked tonight that I'm asked to go bigger than what I wanted and do. So, one solution to get the outdoor living space would, two solutions. One is degrade the backyard a little bit and put lawn back there. I'm opposed to it, but if it makes this process simple tonight, I'll do that. The other would be to take the carport and not make it a living roof and make it a roof deck. Again, my whole goal was to tread lightly. No stairs. I don't want the, I don't want the condominiums to see me from up above, and so that was my goal. But so, I'm getting pushed a little bit away from my goal, but to answer your question, we are okay to go to 450.
Okay, so, the other, so, the other variance was in regard to the usable open space, and you're saying that the rationale for wanting to go under was minimum disruption to the outdoor area?
Absolutely. And if you notice the pictures, all these projects are up on podium decks, so the coastal scrub can grow below it. I want coastal scrub above them. I'm expecting anybody who lives here will probably commute to San Francisco. There's a wonderful beach down below. There's bike riding. I really don't see why they need onsite lawns, tennis courts, or anything of that component for four units, and I'm trying to tread lightly on here. It's not a costly thing. The easiest thing of this project would have been, like you see all in this neighborhood, is to build a single building, two, three stories tall, park it underneath, and get in and get out, and absolutely, that's not what we want to do. We're not taking the cheap route on this, one bit.
Okay. And there's one other, sorry to hog this right now. There's, I saw that staff was just talking about utilizing the top of a carport? Is that?
Two suggestions that came up from us today was to accommodate the extra outdoor space that we need. It's about 1,000 square feet we're shy. One choice would be to put the lawn behind the units, and the other choice would be to take the carport, not have it sloped, make it flat, take the living roof component off it, which will make it more visible to the condominiums above, and make that a usable roof deck, which is allowable use. Again, I don't think there's any purpose or need, but I understand where we're at with the variance, and I think a lot of the push came from Hal not having much time to digest the project and coming, and just having, I hope he can speak for himself. If it's still an issue for the variance, we can make that happen.
Okay, thanks. I think there's another, some more questions for you.
All safe, but.
Is that Commissioner Cooper?
It is.
All right.
I think it's a unique concept. You know, I haven't seen a lot of these being built. I do have concern over converting that roof to a usable space. I think it's asking for trouble as far as falling off that roof. How do you plan to keep people off that roof so people don't fall off?
Are you asking me if it stays as proposed, as a greenlit?
As proposed, yes.
I don't have any intentions of people climbing on that roof. I mean, there's lots of projects that people, I have none, but I'm willing to take any input from the commissioners, if they want me to put some protective devices in.
That's really the only question I had. You've answered my question about the square footage, and I do still have concern over the zoning issue. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dave before he steps down or Mike? Nope? All right. Thank you, sirs. At this point, we are going to move to the, open the public hearing, and we've only got about 25,000 cards. All right, so, I'm opening the public hearing, and I'm going to call you, I'm going to call a couple names in advance at a time, so you guys have time to prepare. And each person has three minutes. Come to the podium, and you can speak your mind. So, we're going to do, and I apologize in advance, because some of your handwriting is not that good. I know. I'm talking to my daughter right now. Caroline Hunter? Hinter? Hinter? Kathy Hinter, maybe?
Caroline.
Of course. And then we'll do Mary Shapiro? Shapo?
I think that.
Hmm? Oh, okay. There you go. I see a pattern. And then we'll do David Herzl. Okay.
Whoops. Hi, I just had a couple of questions that relate to cars in terms of access, parking, and safety in that location. As far as access, I'm just wondering how residents of the development will get their cars up to it from Palmetto, like what the access route is, and what the parking will be for those residents and their guests once they get there. And related to that is how the work and, how work and emergency crews will get to the development. That's it. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. And the way this format works is that we're, there's actually not really a Q and A with the public, but you guys get to speak and give your questions, and at the end of that, then the applicant has an opportunity to respond, but we wait till the, all the members of the public have spoken, and then Dave gets like one minute to respond. I'm just kidding. Okay, so next is, yes?
Hi. Hello. Good evening. I'm walking through the planning commission staff report and making some observations, because I really don't know how this format works. But the first thing I'm, that I want to raise is the exemption, well, let's see, I'll maybe go in order. I'm a little confused about these being studio apartments, because I always thought the definition of studio was that there was no bedroom. And in the plans that I saw, there is a resting area, and it has a closet, which I always thought was the definition of a bedroom. So, I don't know, I don't fully appreciate what the significance of it being a studio versus a one-bedroom unit, and whether that impacts the rules and regulations for variances and so forth. The next observation I have has to do with something in Section 3 where there's a discrepancy. It says, "The size of the lot is .42 acres, which would permit a total of eight dwellings." And then, just below that, it says, "The equivalent of four to six units for the subject's site." And I don't fully appreciate what the context is to understand why one says eight, one says four to six, and to understand what the ramifications are to zoning. There's a reference to drainage. I know there, that some of you are very familiar with this, having lived here so long, but there's, the way that it is structured, the actual geological structure of it, you know, right across the road is a ravine that is quite large, that was clearly developed from water going down. And so, the drainage issue seems really important once you start messing with the actual land use that it currently has. I haven't had access to the Environmental Planning and Ecological Solutions Report, nor the other report, which I assume is part of the documents that were attached to it, and I'll get those separately. Then I get to the CEQA exemption, and I don't think of Pacifica as an urbanized area, certainly not the area that is the furthest north in Pacifica. So, to me, the exemptions, there's an issue whether that actually applies. You know, having moved here from San Francisco, I'm well aware of what an urban area is, and this is not one of them. Let's see. I'm also really concerned about, oh, that was it?
That means you have one more minute.
Okay. I'm also really concerned about the potential traffic patterns. Do I need to do something?
No, it'll go off on its own.
Stops on its own. The traffic patterns. Went down there yesterday morning to look, look at it, and now with the plans in place, even though there are studios, there are likely to be two people living in those units. And the fact that there's only one car per unit and only one guest spot really concerns me because of the egress and ingress, or whichever it is, when you, you, that's, there's blind corners on either side in terms of the way that traffic moves. And I know there was a fatality just near there very recently, and so I want to register my concern about the traffic patterns and the parking and egress and ingress. Let's see. I also have, let's see, a couple more notes. Oh, concerned about whether the zoning in Pacifica would allow those units spused for Airbnb, meaning that we would, might have people coming in and out rather than rentals for longer periods of time. That's one thing. And also the lighting, light pollution, which I don't see having been addressed in the plan report. So, I just wanted to summarize some of the issues that I saw in the staff report that raised concerns to me relative to my knowledge of the area. And I will go away now.
Thank you very much, Mary. After David, we're going to have Jim Schenkel and Steve Rhodes.
Hello, my name is David Herzl, 10-year resident Pacifica. Before that, I was in Moss Beach for about 15 years. For, by profession, I'm a residential building designer, so I think about how buildings are constructed, residences. And also, as a casual observer for those last 25 years of coastal erosion at the Bluff Tops, and that's what brings me here tonight. So, I have two kind of big issues, and one issue is I question the suitability of this particular parcel for development from a geological standpoint. First off, the encroachment of the ravine coming up suggests an underlying weakness of the overall structure. And I know that they have, at least superficially, with, I think, earth sciences, you know, addressed this somewhat, but the encroachment of the ravine suggests that there's an underlying weakness, as does the failure of geology on down Esplanade and down below Lands End. I noticed that the constructions on drilled piers on the podium, and through my building design work, I have become aware of residences that when the, of unconnected drilled piers, that they do tend to settle, or they can tend to settle differentially, which means that the building itself is going to have unlevel floors. This is something to be considered. And of course, we do have the notable, if we look down at Esplanade and down below Lands End, and you can see where the, the engineering and the geologic fixes as far as the seawall and also the large structure before Lands End that was built and lasts several years. And you can see from the fact that the seawall is about 25% covered from erosion from above shows that the, the assessment and the fix did not address all of the issues at hand there for that. So, it's something that needs to be looked at in great detail. Second, I question the suitability of this for development from a planning standpoint because of the variances and the exceptions that have been requested. As a building designer, I tend to look at the variance that it applies equally to everyone, and that variances in particular need to be demonstrated. There's a hardship for the particular application, you know, demonstrable for that application for that lot. And I, looking through this, I don't see a particular hardship that, that would justify the, the variances that are being requested. And I did notice that the applicant said that he was willing to expand the sizes of the buildings, and that that would take care of that one variance request. But I asked that, respectfully asked that the commissioners look at this and look at every project that is requesting variances and exceptions very carefully, because in my view and in my work, when variances are granted, and I've seen this happen in different places and different jurisdictions, it tends to be to the overall detriment of the neighborhood and the community through the dilution of the entire zoning ordinance process. And then, tick, 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 tick. And then finally, actually, and this is relative to the stormwater retention, I noticed there's a 350-square-foot, cubic-foot stormwater retention basin before the stormwater is evacuated to a storm drain off the property. And my understanding is from California Building Code, or at least certainly in San Mateo County, that all rainwater that falls upon a given piece of property after development has to be entirely retained upon that piece of property and can't be diverted into public or other drainage. So, those are the points that I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've got Jim Schenkel.
My name is Jim Schenkel, and I've been in Pacifica for something over 20 years now. And I, I just would like to say, first of all, I was involved with the Fish and Bowl proceedings that happened back in 2004, '05, '06, and I think what's happened here, to some extent, is that this applicant is suffering from the, the delayed effects of that earlier and unpleasant proceeding that occurred, because it's kind of like the antibodies from that were already in the body. And so, you know, we are all back out again, because the last time around was what I would not consider to be a pleasant experience for anyone. And I'm happy to say, I think this applicant has done a good job. I understand you can't build something that's going to be completely invisible, but he seems to be sensitive to the idea that he's going to reduce it as much as possible, and I applaud him for that. But that said, the thing that jumps out at me in this notice of hearing is the project is exempt from CEQA. I heard staff tonight say, "We recommend that it be exempt from CEQA." That's getting in the right direction. I think that if you look at the Class 3B, which is small development, this is right on the edge of whether it's small or not. That section talks about apartments, duplexes, and similar structures, not more than six units if they're in an urbanized area. I agree with Mary Shapiro that, you know, this isn't exactly urban infill here. This is a, an area that is about to be cracked open by development that has not occurred before. And I understand that the applicant feels that this is a separate parcel. He's not talking about Fish and Bowl, and I get that, but I think it could still be the thing that opens the door to a much wider development there, and I, I have some questions about that. And related to that, I haven't heard anybody talking about Section 15302, which is, the law often provides exceptions to the exceptions. And that exception says that it's qualified by consideration of location, cumulative impact, and significant impact. I'm concerned about cumulative impact, because I think if this development is permitted, it, it becomes much more likely that the fish and then the bowl will be developed thereafter, and I'm concerned about opening the door to that. The location is particularly sensitive. We've heard comments about- The location is particularly sensitive, we've heard comments about the, uh, groundwater, uh, we've heard comments about the, the ravine across the way. I think both of those things make this a sensitive site. And, and finally, uh, you, you can't use a categorical exemption where there's a reasonable possibility that activity will have a significant effect on the environment due to unusual circumstances. Well, we don't know about wetlands. The staff report says somebody went out there and looked and saw there was no wetlands. The applicant says there's no wetlands there. Perhaps that's true, but it seems to me that this is not something that you can judge, you know, four years into a historical drought, that somebody needs to go out there and look to see whether there are hydro soils, whether there's riparian vegetation, and figure out whether or not this really is, uh, an area that lacks sensitivity, if I can put it that way, a double negative. So, uh, the other thing is that the staff says that it's outside the Coastal Commission, uh, appeals area, but the Coastal Commission disagreed with that back in 2005, 2006. So, in that, in that intimidating package of materials that you have, uh, with regard to what happened the last time around, are some, um, some indications of what the Coastal Commission felt about this area, and, um, I think it should be considered in the context of this new application. And I would urge the Commission to find that this is not exempt from SEQA, and therefore that an environmental impact report should be prepared for this sensitive parcel. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, we've got Steve Rhodes, and then after that, we've got William Trishon and Victor Carmichael.
Uh, good evening. My name is Steve Rhodes, and this whole meeting is short this week. Um, I would like the powers to be cast a no vote on this project that lies before you. Ben, this project is small compared to the ones submitted in the past. However approved, this will be a step in stone to further develop Fish and Bowl until it is a baltic wall of housing. The natural center of the Fish and Bowl is home to Mother Nature, to include birds, snakes, frogs, and so forth. This project will destroy this natural habitat, as well as destabilize the geological area around it. Uh, I implore you to examine this with a fine tooth comb, and ask yourself if this is in the best interest of Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. William Trishon?
My name is William Trishon. I've lived in Pacifica for almost three years. I'm a neighbor of the proposed development as well. Now, in reading and rereading the staff report, it seems to me that this project in the Fish and Bowl is a done deal, and the builders will be allowed to build. The report states numerous times that staff believes this, or staffs believe that. I get it, I think you, you believe that this project should proceed, but I urge you members of the Commission to think of the big picture here, not just four small studio apartments. When I moved here three years ago, and spoke with some of my neighbors about the wonderful piece of open land in our neighborhood, that we're blessed to have in our neighborhood, they all talked about the 10-year fight to save the Fish and Bowl, 1997, 2006, we've referred to it a lot, to help stop the, uh, construction of 43 condominiums in the Bowl. So, we tried a big project, it was rejected. Now we're asked to try a small project, less than half an acre, less than half an acre. And which half an acre? Here's what the staff report says, quote, "Staff believes that the physical restraints of the property limits practical development of the site." So already, you're saying, "It's gonna be hard to build in this spot." So again, why, why this site? I just don't get it. There are too many small problems, that individually might not seem like a lot, but when you add them up, it just seems like it's too much. For example, the list of variances they're seeking, the increased surface runoff from all the new concrete surfaces that are gonna be, uh, built, the roads, the access road, the concrete slabs. Where will guests park? Only one guest space for four units, really? What about if a couple lives there? That's two cars. Uh, we talked about parking issues, turning off of Palmetto, dangerous. Exemption from, from SEQA? We must, folks, we must maintain our environmental standards. And of course, the loss of native habitat. Your, the applicant's environmental consultants found that, quote, "No evidence of wetland hydrology appeared to be present on the site," unquote. I bet the drought had something to do with that. I bet the drought had something to do with that. But your consi, your consultants, um, Mr. Blackman, Mr. O'Connell, they, your consultant cannot deny that the previous EIR conducted during the earlier attempts to build on the Fish and Bowl. That EIR did, in fact, confirm that the adjacent sites did include wetlands. So yes, there's no wetland on our one half of the Laker, but a couple yards away, yes, we do have wetlands over there. So in closing, as a former renter of 40 years, and now a proud homeowner in the city of Pacifica, I recognize that rental property is a key portion of any city's makeup. We need rental property in Pacifica. But just because one can build someplace, doesn't mean that one should build there. Please, help us keep the Fish and Bowl as it is. It is a treasure, as it is. The units proposed by Mr. Blackman and Mr. O'Connell are a bad fit for Upper Palmetto. I urge you to reject this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We've got, uh, Mr. Carmichael.
Uh, yes, um, my name's Victor Carmichael, and, and I've lived in Pacifica since 1992. Um, my first question, I guess, is why here? I think a lot, some of the other speakers mentioned that, too, that the inappropriateness of this. Uh, I, when we did talk to Mr. Blackman, it did seem like a, a low-key minimalist kind of project, tolerable, but it has cumulative impact. Uh, this is a, is remarkable, does this area stay open for so long? It's several, several reasons for that. Geological and hydro, hydrological problems, it contains biologically sensitive areas, there's been community resistance, which I've been part of, and the past owner, this is kind of important, the past owner, up until the, uh, the, the last round that we went through this in the 90s, wanted it to be open spaces. Only when she passed away, it passed on to her heirs, that it went on the market, and that's when all the fights began. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a miracle that we still have it, and it's really a jewel, and I, that's why I fight it so hard to keep it. But it, it's, it's built or not built on practical reasons, not on emotional or aesthetic reasons. He, a lot of the people have brought up most of the key points that I was gonna bring up. The ravine is marching east, you can't stop geology. In 50 years, that ravine is gonna, you know, make it to the road, it's gonna sever that road, and they're gonna need to use that very place that the property's gonna be, with the, the project's gonna go on to, you're gonna need that for realignment of the road. Another important point is that the, the footprint of the project actually encroaches on city right-of-way, it's on the, on the right-of-way of Palmetto Avenue. Another issue is, and this is brought up by other, other speakers, but it's kind of important, there's not enough parking for all the uni, uh, the, all the cars that the units are gonna generate. The, the, these places are gonna, these little places are, are, are too small to, 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 to really, uh, be built without a, a variance, and yet they have these million-dollar views. It's kind of a strange arrangement. So what's gonna happen is professional people that have, uh, take a couple of people, at least, to pay for the rent on those places, and they're, so they're gonna need two cars rather than one, and you've only got one carport per unit. And then they're gonna have friends, you've only got one guest space. Where are these gonna, cars are all gonna wind up out on Palmetto, and you've already got those two blind curves that other people have mentioned, so you've created a parking hazard without even thinking about it. Another issue is the, the heritage trees. I don't think anybody's mentioned those, but there's a whole lot of trees there, I don't know how they're gonna survive this. But finally, and the most important thing, is the major, big project that we fought so hard for, so hard to resist, was finally, was finally defeated, because the Coastal Commission determined that the, the, the actual erection of the project would, would have detrimental effects on the, the sensitive habitats. Several identifiable wetlands were in there, seasonal wetlands, and, uh, riparian, uh, prairie, uh, habitat was in there, and that was gonna be damaged by the, by the, the development, uh, construction part. Well, this project is even closer. So they're looking at their own, their own land for sensitive habitat, but they're not looking at the fish. The fish zone is where all the, the sensitive habitat actually existed, not in the Bowl. The Bowl never did actually have any identifiable, isolated wetlands, as defined, of course, by the Coastal Commission, but not by the city. Finally, uh, we, we need to make sure that SEQA doesn't, the SEQA, the SEQA exemption doesn't hold up, because it doesn't make sense not to have an EIR on this thing. This thing definitely needs an EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, uh, two remaining cards, Hal Bonner and Courtney Conlin. So, Mr. Bonner?
Uh, hello, Hal Bonner, um, live in Pacifica. I wanna comment a little bit about the process here. That thick stack of documents that you got this evening was from me, and I apologize for you getting it just this evening. What happened was, if you may not know, the staff report was not made public until April 3rd, that was last Thursday. At that time, I looked at the staff report, within the same day, I responded to the staff report and provided comments, uh, to the staff, and, at that time, submitted that thick pack of documents, 'cause that's the first time I'd seen the staff report. I sent that and asked that that be sent to, that information be sent to you promptly. And I was told, "Well, we can't do that, because, uh, the, the package has already been sent to the commissioners." And I said, "Well, can't," or I emailed and said, "Can't you, uh, email this to them?" And apparently, it wasn't done, and so it was handed to you. So anyway, I, I apologize for you getting it, but to hear that you are not even to look at it now, is frankly, kind of makes me a little angry. Um, there was a reason for having that included. It was the record before the Coastal Commission concerning the adjacent property, the Fish and Bowl, of which the project you have in front of you tonight is right in the middle of. And, uh, it's, it discusses a lot of information that the staff report, your staff report, doesn't have. It's a staff report that the Coastal Commission prepared, and it shows a lot of environmentally sensitive habitat. It shows, um, a term that I'm not familiar with, but it's called coastal terrace prairie habitat, which, uh, is right adjacent to this project that you're looking at tonight. Uh, that's the purpose for providing you this information, is because it's got a lot that's relevant to what you're thinking about tonight. Then I also wanna talk briefly, what another fellow just mentioned, it, SEQA Guidelines 15-300 dot 2, which is not mentioned in the staff report, which is directly relevant to this, and, uh, that goes to the categorical exemption that, uh, under 15, um, excuse me, 15-303, that's discussed in the staff report. Well, 15-300 dot 2 qualifies 15-303, and, in my opinion, requires a, um, an EIR. And I'd appreciate it if you, if you'd look at that information. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Courtney? Hmm, that is our last speaker, and I am not seeing Courtney. All right, would anyone else like to speak on this project? Yes, so you can come and speak, and...
Is there a mic?
Yeah, let's see what we can do to accommodate this, or, is there any way to...
Yeah, we just could, I can get a mic.
Can everybody hear me?
You know...
If you use the mic, then you're on.
Yeah, 'cause the TV can pick it up, then, so let's, we'll try to mic you up.
Why don't you, why don't you throw one on the table there?
Great, that works.
Thanks, Mike.
Testing. Uh, my name is Sky Parker, uh, born and raised in Pacifica. I'm a designer and a draftsman, and I just wanted to attest to the taste of Dave Blackman. Um, he builds some of the nicest houses in Pacifica. If you're familiar with his work, he does build some of the nicest houses in Pacifica. Uh, so just wanted to say that. Um, and also, uh, can I talk about something else, not related to the project?
It, it should be related to the project.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, afterwards, you have an opportunity during...
Public communications.
Public communications, but it's after the public hearings closed, yeah. But tonight, I'll call it out.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, did you guys need a card from Sky? Yeah? Sky, if you, if you could fill out a card at some point, just putting your name and information on it, and then give it to those guys over there, that'd be great.
There, it's the back of the room.
Okay, anybody else who would like to speak on this project? Uh, right, I am, we are closing the public hearing, and, at this point, the applicant has an opportunity to, uh, respond to, uh, public comments.
I did my best to take some notes of what people were talking about, and, um, some of the ones that, the urbanized definition. The urbanized definition of SEQA is if you take the population of City of Pacifica and the two neighboring cities, if it's over 100,000, the entire city's an urban area. I mean, it's just a, it's just how SEQA works. So if you add Pacifica, 40,000, Daly City, 100, South, South San Francisco, you're at 200, you're double over. So that, that's just a technicality, people don't understand the urbanizing, it's not what the appearance looks like at that local area. Parking access, I'm kind, I mean, uh, I was told that I was building in the public right-of-way, um, this project, that's not true. Somebody asked about the general plan versus the zoning, which are slightly different, um, but, um, maybe staff can answer that better. I was asked to do more parking, I'm asked, maybe to make these units bigger. I was, I'm kinda shocked that I'm asking to do more, but, um, again, I was trying to tread lightly, and I met the zoning requirements for the parking, you know, so that was why, um, we did what we did. Uh, peer settling, I, we have the engineer to answer that, I don't think that's gonna be a problem. I can speak more tightly on the cumulative impact, but that's to one project, that's not to, you can't start adding all the projects in Pacifica, even if they were neighboring or not. I can explain that further if somebody needs to. And, uh, you know, what's kind of profound, too, is that we had this bridge rebuilt down at Peter Point. They dredged the creek, they tore up the habitat, and that didn't even require an EIR. An EIR is a pretty profound requirement. I mean, it's 80 to $100,000 to do. So we also, people were talking about the drought, and looking at the, uh, the wetlands. Um, we looked at all the work that was done by TRA, the staff report that Hal Bonner brought forward. My biologist reviewed that, read that, looked at it. We also, any of the wetland components that might, was extensively done. This isn't just an opinion of staff or mine, this was done at a very expensive biological level. He can answer any questions if you guys have. This is exempt from SEQA. We could've gone, again, I could've gone a six-unit building, three stories tall, and still been exempt from SEQA. So there are no habitat that I'm harming. I'm trying to think of what other questions people have, but I'm gonna stick around and answer any other more questions, and I got everybody's sentiment. I think the sentiment is, is they'd like it to stay the way it is, and, uh, you know, that it doesn't seem fair. I mean, I really wish a lot of people in town would tear their house down and leave, but that doesn't seem fair. I don't know if that's even appropriate to say. But, um, the drainage, um, that were, we're 400 feet back from the coastal bluffs, so the, the, right now, they're talking about two feet, that, the Coastal Commission and the City of Pacifica said it retain, it comes back at two feet a year, so, and we're supposed to have 100-year life, so at that rate, we have a 200-year life. But regarding the ravine, that's a man-made phenomenon. Though, it's actually the drainage that was put in 1930, because that, that Palmetto used to be Highway 56, that was the way into Pacifica. They put a pipe across that drained the Bowl, and it's a man-made phenomenon. At any point in time, and if you look at the geological report, they went back in time, that's at a hell, very much expense, it hasn't moved in 50 years, and the reason it's not moving, it's a man-made phenomenon by a pipe that the city may or may not even know is theirs, to manage. But if we wanna correct it or make it better, that's possible, but the drainage we're putting in is actually gonna alleviate a lot of the water that's going down that ravine, so we're actually benefiting the ravine. The Palmetto right-of-way, since it used to be Highway 56 and the coast highway, there's a lot of room to move Palmetto over. And so, we've designed, as the Coastal Commission said, for at least 100 years, and, um, I understand other people's concern about what's going on in Esplanade and on those cliffs, but that is not the phenomenon of what's going on where we're at.
Or are we ready to take on deliberations ourselves? I guess I've got a que, oh, okay. Who's that?
I can go first if you want.
I've got a question for staff. Do you have a question for Dave?
I have a question for staff, too, but go ahead.
Okay. This is a sort of a jurisdictional question, like who gets to decide what? In terms of, so some things that are on the table are whether this project is exempt from CEQA, and perhaps related to that is whether an EIR is required. Are those, are, taking those separately, are those within our purview or your purview? Or can you clarify?
Well, in making an action on the project, you'll be confirming staff's recommendation that this is a project that's exempt from CEQA. If that is not something that the commission is comfortable with, you can direct us to go back and bring back, I think, if, assuming we don't move from that opinion, we can bring back further facts to the commission for your consideration. And what I mean by facts are case law on how this exemption section has been interpreted by the courts, for example. I think the applicant has already provided the biological analysis, but things like that, we can come back if you guys, if the commission would like more information on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper?
All right, I have, just to inform fellow commissioners and the audience out there, I have a couple of comments. First of all, I think that it's a wonderful design. I have not seen a design like this before, with the way that the landscape has been preserved, the living roofs, the community involvement that he has with it. I think that it's, it is a really interesting project. I do have some concerns. I think that the concern for the drainage is of genuine concern, of the bluffs being there, where the runoff's going to be for the parking and the drainage and whatnot. The other thing I'd like to bring up is, you know, the community and our commission have been involved in a lot of the affordable housing that's in the area and the lack of it. These are very small units. They probably wouldn't rent for very much. I'm not sure of that, but maybe there's an opportunity there for some affordable affordability within the City of Pacifica for having such a small unit. Parking is always of a concern. I agree with everybody that there is a matter of parking over there, but then again, we could have four units with blacktop everywhere, and then we have no landscape. So it's kind of a give and take here of what's adequate for the unit. If you're going to have 10 people visiting in an apartment that's 450 square feet, I don't think there's going to be very much place for someone to stand. So there is always going to be an issue with parking. Is it adequate, and does it meet the guidelines of the city, I think, is the concern here. I am concerned with the Airbnb use. I think that is an interesting concept, and whether or not there's a restriction, or if the city actually has a restriction for Airbnb use for these types of units. It's something that's come up in the City and County of San Francisco with rent control, and then the people renting their units out. But I think it also has an effect on people in the area knowing where to park and knowing what the traffic patterns are within the area to make it a more safe observation. The structural issues, I think that you, that you've pointed out are important, but there are ways around a lot of those settlement issues that I have seen in my personal career as well. I think that the condition for increasing the size of the units to 450 square feet to meet the minimum size is of concern here, and I think that it is a nice concession for Mr. Blackman to offer to meet that zoning requirement. However, there are some, still some issues that I have with the zoning requirements. I don't consider this a single building. This is four individual buildings. There are, as we, you guys were talking, I was listening too at the same time, there are some issues with putting four detached structures on a property and calling it an apartment. So I would like clarification on that and to read a little more of the material. That's my reservations on this. I think there's been a lot of information that's been presented here. I didn't, was not on the commission at the time to read the document for the EIR, and I'm interested on what had went on there in the past, and I'm not that familiar with it at this point in time. So that's my discussion.
Commissioner Campbell?
Well, I appreciate the comments made that this project is not the Fish and Bowl, and I, that Fish and Bowl project was before my time on the commission, but I understand it was, as one speaker called it, a very unpleasant experience. And I get the feeling this project may be shadowed by that experience. Looking, you know, looking at the project, it seems like this is probably the least amount of development that could probably occur on this site, this size site. The design's nice, and I'm, at the moment, not having too much issue with its cumulative effects. I understand this argument that it could open the door to Fish and Bowl development, but on the other hand, this is just a separate parcel of property. As far as CEQA goes, it, that's an interesting issue, whether we're the ones who kind of make that, that call on whether EIR would be required or not. And not to get too much into the law, but the Supreme Court of California did come out on March 2nd with a pretty significant decision regarding this very exemption, 15-303, Berkeley Hillside Preservation, and which gave the city a lot more latitude, kind of cut back on the exceptions to the exemption. I won't get into that, but I have my doubts whether an EIR would be required after that Supreme Court decision last month. So in, you know, in light of what I'm kind of looking at here, it's, I like the fact that actually they came in under the max, which is something that's rare, and I think for the adjoining landowners, maybe something to look to. Now, hand it over to my fellow commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Vadalas?
I'd like to second that it is not the Fish and Bowl. It is a separate parcel. It shouldn't be considered to be the same as the Fish and Bowl. It is separate. In this, the general plan says he could build four to six units. These units are so much better than a three-story apartment building he could have built there, like he said, with parking underneath, that would not have blended in with the environment. We don't have a view ordinance, but yet he considered the view of the neighbors, and I think that's important. They're much more desirable than they could have been, and it looks like a good project to me. The four apart, the four parking spots are what's in the code. We are only here to interpret the code, and that doesn't have a variance. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Vadalas. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. Listening to everybody, I agree, this is not the Fish and Bowl. And I will admit, I lived in the Pacific Point condos for 10 years, right above them, and I was against the Fish and Bowl development back then. I still am against Fish and Bowl development. I'll put that up front. This is not the Fish and Bowl. This elevation over the bowl is quite a few feet. I looked on here, and there are no trees on the project land, so thus there will be no trees cut down. I do have a question, though, for Mr. Blackman. What kind of pavement or paving are you looking at for the driveway?
I was going to come here tonight and ask for a few things, and I thought it would muddy the water up. One, we were talking about maybe making a pervious surface and maybe eliminating the storm drain. That was something, I just don't want to muddy the waters tonight. I'll listen with you guys. I was thinking even going that direction. I was also toying with the idea, I really don't even want the sidewalk there. That was a default by the engineering department, and I'd rather skip the sidewalk. And I noticed that there's no ADA ramps on Drake Boulevard. There's no ADA ramps on the, where the sidewalk ends across the street and above. So I wanted to make a concession and say, "Let's keep it rural where I'm working at, and maybe I'll spend my resources making ADA compliance on the rest of Palmetto around." So I was, but now after this whole conversation, I got scared to muddy the whole waters, and maybe I'm still muddying up. That was something I would like to happen, is maybe minimize the impervious surface, maybe remove the storm drain, but I think there's enough on your plate tonight, and maybe I'll just be quiet.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Blackman.
I was thinking of further things I could do to make this project more desirable to myself, and what I was thinking would be less treading on the earth, so.
Right. Well, we'll leave it to staff on the requirement for the sidewalks and all that. That's, that's written in the, in the books and in the codes for that, so I'm not, I was more interested in what you were thinking about as far as the, if it was impervious or, you know, just blacktop or whatever, you know? You know us, we're always looking for impervious surfaces, but...
Through the chair by me, one of the conditions of approval is that, actually, let's see, condition number eight, staff is recommending that all paving area shall be permeable to the maximum, maximum extent feasible, so.
Okay. Thank you. I, I did go up and walk the property with Mr. Blackman. It's a very small piece of property, and I understand, because I lived right above it, the idea of looking down at rooftops was not my, I did not like that idea. This, I thought to myself, was very, very ingenious, to you're looking down at growing roofs. I mean, as one of my other commissioners said, this is about as invisible as you can get with buildings, I think. It's not invisible, but it's close, I thought, from, from a distance. The trees, the existing trees that are not on his property actually are between his property and Pacific Point. So I think that's a plus in itself right there. I like the idea of keeping as natural a surface as possible. You actually have stuff, sage and stuff growing underneath your house. I think that's, that's ingenious. I like that. I really do. The parking is a concern. I have, I always have concern about parking in Pacifica, and it really depends on where the housing is at. And I under, I drove Palmetto years and years. I think there's enough distance between, I mean, I think in the plan it said almost 40, 200 square feet, or 400, 445 on, yeah, on both sides line of sight. That's pretty much right in the middle between those two. I feel comfortable with that, and especially with only four units. I have some concerns, but, and I applaud you for actually going smaller. We usually get complaints about that's too big. You don't allow them to build that large. I applaud you for that. Going smaller is, is something of the future. We're saving land, we're saving a lot of things, building materials. I'm now just talking off the top of my head, so I will forego the rest of it, but I like the project. I understand it's a very, very sensitive area. It's not the bowl. It's not the fish. It is a separate piece of property, and I have, we have to remember that because what we decide up here can only be what's in front of us, not other things. So we have to remember that. And that's it for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. I'll just give a few comments and thoughts. I think as every other commissioner has said now, we're only, we're only permitted to evaluate a project based on the four corners of the project. We can't really start, we can't go, it's not fair to the applicant, it's really not fair to the process to evaluate this project based on another project. We're not permitted to do it anyway. So I just wanted to say that up front. I know that there was concerns raised from the public about endangered habitat and geological suitability, and, I mean, there's a, there's a geotechnical report, there's a biologist's report, and I can't really substitute my ignorant opinion for experts who have looked at the study, who have looked at the area and have, you know, offered their opinion. It's, it's just not for me to step in and question that. So I have to defer to the experts in that and say that, you know, the parcel is suitable for, you know, for, for the project with respect to, to the geology and respect to the wildlife there. What's really ironic is that I think you've got, you know, a desire for, I think one of the speakers was talking about variances, and the fact that, that Mr. Blackman is asking for so many variances itself, you know, is, is a, is a bad thing, and I think we have to look beyond, beyond just the fact that it's, he's asking for a variance. Why is he asking for a variance? Well, in a lot of these situations, he's trying, he's asking for a variance to minimize impact on the property, and that's, that's to be encouraged. So personally, I have no problem with the variances that he's asking for. Another speaker's mentioned that, that some of the, some of the new projects in town built by Mr. Blackman are some of the nicest ones around, and I agree, actually. I've never, I haven't always agreed with Mr. Blackman on his projects, but this is really aesthetically looking, it's very nice looking. So my own, I am concerned about the process, I'm, I'm in favor of the project personally, but at the same time, I have concerns that there was a, a lot of information that was dumped on us, that was dumped on us, not by the fault of the public, and really not by fault of the staff, it just kind of happened. And so we haven't had a lot of time to digest some of this information. I do question whether some of the information regarding the Fish and Bowl, you know, should come into consideration here, but still, I, you know, I'm, I'm sensitive to us sort of shooting blind, and so that, that does concern me, and I wouldn't, I don't really know how to address it either. So I think I just went through my list. The CEQA question is, boy, that's, you know, if, I used to work at a big law firm, and we would have a, you know, we would have some junior associates spend two days analyzing the problem and giving us a report. That's, we don't have that luxury here. And I don't have, and I can't sit here and say that, well, you know, based on my five-minute look at, at, at the two paragraphs that are written about it, it's, you know, that staff is wrong on this. I'm not going to say that. So, huh, okay. That's about it for now. Is this a new light? Okay. Great. Commissioner Vadalas?
One of the items that was brought up was rent control and Airbnb. We do not have rent control. There are many units in Pacifica that are vacation rental by owner and Airbnb, and we don't have rent control, so you can't make any judgment on that.
If I could comment through the chair on the Airbnb, there is a separate use category for boarding house, and when it's that quick of a turnover, it's really not just somebody who's renting their home or their apartment, it's really more of a boarding house. And so that is not what Mr. Blackman is applying for. That would require a use permit in this zone, so that's not the approval that, that this, this project is receiving. And I know that, I've heard that the Airbnb is becoming more common, and we would, as a city, we would need to address it kind of moving forward from here because we don't have a huge enforcement staff. And so I don't know if, if it's the council's direction to even do that at this point. So I just wanted to just make a general... do that at this point, so I just wanted to just make a general comment about that. It's a different use. It's not an apartment, it's not a single-family home, depending on where it is.
Thank you. Okay, some lights have lit up here. I'm not sure who's first. Commissioner Cooper.
Yeah, I would agree with my fellow commissioners, there's only certain things that we can, you know, decide on here at the Planning Commission, and certainly bringing up my concerns with the Airbnb and some of the other issues that we have, those aren't in front of us today, those are simply comments that I have from my fellow commissioners for future consideration, I think not only from the Planning Commission, but from the City Council. But I think it's important that those concepts are at least brought to the public's attention and go from there. So, you know, we do rely upon you for the determinations for some of the exceptions that we have within the SEQA. Again, I, we don't have a huge law staff that we can go back and consult here. It is of concern of mine, however, I do have to defer to our Planning Commissioner, or excuse me, our staff, to make sure that they've done their homework and they've done their proper recommendations, so.
Through the Chair, I do want to mention that although they couldn't be here and they didn't have time to prepare a written analysis for you, we did run the comment letter by our contract attorneys, who were not concerned with the staff's determination that it was exempt from SEQA. So I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Oh, so that was vetted and analyzed, yeah, by our contract attorney?
Yes. So albeit they had a day, but yes, they did look at it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Chair. Just one last thing I thought of that I didn't say before. Everybody's, when something comes before us, and how it fits into the neighborhood compared to what's around it, we look at that, that's a big issue. And I think the idea of these very small, minimal number of units being there, if it is built, is a statement to begin what should be there, if anything, that we are, we are in a small town around a large urban area, but it's still, we have to fit in with what the codes say, and, but we do have the option of looking at what the neighborhood looks like when things are brought before us, and I think, actually, this is a good idea to have a very small development with very small units, to say, this is what we want here, and not these large three-story, six-unit apartment houses. So, that was what else I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I want to reiterate that we're not really here to second-guess the biological and traffic opinions. You know, one of the main points of these hearings is to allow the public to come up and supplement the administrative record prepared by staff with their own documents, and if they feel that the city got it wrong on the legal analysis, or the biological analysis, or the SEQA analysis, then there's the right of appeal from this decision. I feel like I've got enough, and I've heard enough, tonight to actually make a decision on this project personally, just based on its size and scope, but, and I'm almost willing to make a motion, but I want to see if I can get some consensus up here, so I don't make a wasted one.
There's this one, I think one thing we should just hash out before perhaps we move to a motion stage. I know we went back and forth with, so the plan, the project as before us, the, it's four hundred square feet of level space, is that it? Okay, and I know the applicant said he'd be willing to go up to four fifty, and it seems like we should maybe perhaps hash that out first before we go to a motion? In other words, are we moving, if we do make a motion, is it?
Go ahead. Yeah, Chair, I believe that there is a reason for the code being there at four hundred and fifty square feet, it's probably thought out, and I don't, I think it's a minor concession for Mr. Blackman to make if he's willing to make it, but I think we should ask him officially whether or not he's willing to do that before we make a motion.
And through the Chair, did you also want to ask about the outdoor space, the usable outdoor space?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Chair, my opinion on the outdoor space is I think that you're inviting an improper use of a top of a garage by allowing usable space on top of that carport, so I would grant the exception for not having that additional space.
In other words, so you're in favor of the variance, as is?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. But I'd like to hear whatever people, everybody else has to say as well.
Right. Maybe in terms of process, we should just get down the, each person, each of the commissioners can have a chance to opine on these discrete issues, one being whether to grant the variance for the outdoor space being under the four fifty, and.
The outdoor space is a different variance. The variance for the four fifty is that he increased the size of the units to, from four hundred to four hundred and fifty square feet, and then allow the variance for the outdoor usable.
Right, right, so there's two discrete issues, there's the indoor and the outdoor, let's just, let's just put it that way. Okay, and I think, first of all, maybe what would help is, so, Mr. Blackman, you said you'd be willing to make that concession to go up to four fifty on the indoor.
I'm willing for both, to go either way in either variance. Going to the size of the four fifty won't affect the neighborhood that much, but losing the living roof over the carport, or putting lawn in the back, I think is going to make a pretty big impact for the views above, and so I'd like to avoid having me have more outdoor space. We can save, it's based on the topography, it's based on the size, the location, but that would be my preference. But again, I'm, I can go either way on either one of them, but to put, the two solutions I have for the outdoor living space is lawn or some type of usable space in the back, which they're saying it needs to be graded for the slope, and, or putting a roof deck over the carport, but either would be breaking what I'm trying to do and not be so impacting the view of the neighbors above, so hopefully you can give me that variance at the least. I'd like both variances, but at the least, give me the outdoor one, so I can be a good neighbor.
In terms of the indoor, variance for the indoor space, what's your compelling reason? Or is, what's your, what's the desire, was it just like how the plans were drawn up?
I am serious, I have a house that I rent in Peter Point, that's eight hundred, or it's about seven hundred square feet, and I had, before I had my fourth child, we had three girls, and we lived in six hundred square feet, and I was fine there, and I was cozy there. A friend of mine who's, lives in San Francisco, just bought a two hundred and fifty square foot by choice, he could afford just about anything there, but there are units down to two hundred square feet in San Francisco. When this code was put in in the eighties, I think it's just obsolete, and I don't think it meets today's requirements.
And so we're talking about a difference of, what, I think, did you say it was, it came out to four hundred and fifteen square feet, your?
I think more precisely, trying today to get the exact number, and the number is, I don't know exactly, nobody really knows if you're counting the exterior plywood, the exterior siding. Getting this ticky tack on square footage is hard to quantify, but I believe it's about four seventeen right now. If you bring in more accurate, and to get to four fifty, I think I have to expand the walls four to five inches around the whole thing, so it's fairly negligible, but it's bigger than I want it to be, but I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for that clarification. Maybe what makes sense is for us each to go down and opine on those issues.
Go ahead.
No, no, okay, what do you want? Go for it.
I guess my question was, is there a problem granting the variance for four hundred square foot house instead of a four fifty? I mean, I know it's in the code, but we've never come upon, we've never come upon forcing somebody to make a bigger house. I mean, it just fundamentally is wrong to me, but I want to hear what the idea is. I don't see a problem in granting the variance for the size of the house, so I want to hear staff's thought.
There's two, there's two issues here, there's, there's what the code says, and then there's the variance issue. So the code says four hundred and fifty, and we can talk about whether or not that, you know, everything seems to be getting smaller in terms of rental units nowadays, whether or not that's still an appropriate number. But that is what we have now, and so to grant a variance, you have to make the findings under the code. And so finding number one, which I think is in the staff report, is what the commission would need to focus on, and we've provided you some information, but if there's anything else that you guys feel is applicable as to meeting that finding requirement, you can put it into the record and make it a part of the motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Maybe in order to wrap this up, do you want to, we've got a couple moving parts, just in terms of.
I think as few variances as possible, and that would be increasing the size of the dwelling to four fifty, but eliminating the outdoor space requirement to keep it in good visual perspective for the neighbors.
Okay, so you were, you're against the variance on the indoor space, and you're in favor of the variance in the outdoor space, okay.
I didn't say that much easier.
No, you did, I gotcha, okay. How about, Commissioner Evans?
I'll put the easy one up front. I have no problem with the variance for the outdoor space. I don't want growing grass, I mean, good guy, we're gonna get away from grass. It's just something else to water. So, no, I have no problem, we have a beautiful area around there, and a lot of land, I have no problem in the variance for that. I'm just having a difficult time with requiring somebody to make their house bigger. It just is not right, but I will go with the majority.
Okay. Commissioner Cooper.
I have nothing further to say.
Okay, just in terms of formulating, crafting a motion that reflects our consensus, I'm just trying to get it sense.
I think that not allowing the variance for the size of the unit, and then allowing the variance for the outdoor use.
Great. Commissioner Campbell?
I'd grant, I'd grant both variances, but I'll go with the will of the commission just to get the deal done.
All right.
And Chair Gordon, what is your preference?
I am fine with the variance on the outdoor, and don't have a strong preference on the indoor, either way. It might be a cleaner project, just from a process standpoint, it might be a cleaner project if there's no variance on the indoor space, but I don't have a strong preference about it. So, where does that leave us? How about, what's that?
Nowhere.
No, 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 I think actually, I would say Commissioner Cooper make the motion, since I think your views reflected, you had the most consensus on both those issues.
I'd like to make a motion. Will move that the Planning Commission find that the project exempt from SEQA, approve site development permit PSD 79014, coastal development permit CDP 347-14, and parking exception PE 160-15, subject to the conditions and approval in Exhibit A, and incorporate all maps and testimonies into the record by reference, and adopt the following resolutions. PC resolution for site development permit modified to say that the square footage of the indoor space shall be four hundred and fifty square feet. Adopt PC resolution for coastal development permit. Adopt the PC resolution for parking exception.
Commissioner Campbell?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Does anybody need clarification on what the motion is? We're all good? Okay, good. That project, that motion passes five to zero. Hold on for a sec.
Where's that language? Make sure you say it.
I know. Where's the wrong language? Here we go. Okay, anyone agreed by the action of the Planning Commission has ten calendar days to appeal their decision in writing to the City Council. If any of the actions, if any of the above actions are challenged and in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Okay, that closes that section of our meeting. We're now moving on to communications, Commission Communications. I see none. Staff Communications.
Sure, I just wanted to bring to your attention that in your binder, or in your packet, was an ethics law primer that was prepared in part by our contract law firm, and so just one thing to highlight is that when you, if you do decide to meet with applicants that are, have projects that are going to be coming before the Planning Commission, just a reminder that it's fine to meet with them, but it should be like a one-way communication until you hear the entire record, and you'll ultimately be making a decision on the project. And then the second thing I wanted to mention is, I just wanted to address the comments about the packet and the materials that you received. So, you know, part of what the department is trying to do is to get projects moving and expedited and before the commission in a timely manner. So you may be getting, we try to get things wrapped up as soon as possible, but you may be getting more packets in the future on Thursday and not a whole week ahead of, ahead of the meeting, that may happen. It's not unusual for contentious projects to have, you know, inches of comments submitted at four fifty-five on the day of the hearing. So this is not what happened here, but I just wanted to, I know you guys are probably aware of that, but that happens. And in this case, we need to improve our process for getting things turned around to you guys right away, so the purpose isn't to send out, or to make a staff report package public a week ahead of time, so that staff can spend the week responding to more comments. I mean, that's why we do public hearing notices, this was a coastal development permit, there's a special notice that goes up, we put our project pipeline list on our website, so we're hoping to be more transparent, and that people who are interested in development will continue to go to those sources and see what's coming before you, and come and talk to staff earlier rather than later, so we can avoid this. However, we do need to make sure that you guys get the city-issued email addresses, which you may have received a memo on that, and I don't know if those have been given to you yet, have they?
Yeah.
Okay, so they haven't told us that, so we now need to then start communicating with you guys through those email addresses, and be able to them, when we get something electronically on a packet on a Thursday afternoon or a Friday afternoon, we can email it right out to you. So I do apologize for that.
And next, we have communications from the public, oral communications, which, this portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda, and the time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes, and you're not required to talk to us, but if you want to, now's your chance. Oh yeah, that's right. Skylar, I think it was, did you want to speak to us about something?
Yep. So I just wanted to say thanks for the curb cutouts that you guys have put in, really appreciate that. I think the city has a long ways to go as far as trying to make it accessible, but there's a few curb cutouts at the top of Paloma that I'd really like to draw your attention to. They're the ones, there's no curb cutouts at the top of the sidewalk going up Paloma, so.
Do you have a cross street?
The cross street would be the driveway going into Ocean High School.
Okay.
So if I get on the sidewalk at the bottom, I go all the way up to the top, and I can't get off. Even if you go all the way around over to the front of the high school, there's no way to get out, I'm just, it just doesn't make much sense, really. I have to go in the street. it just doesn't make much sense, really. I have to go in the street. And it, on top of that, it's a high school, too. I don't know if there's kids in wheelchairs that go to high school there, but they're, they can't get, you know, if that gate's closed, they can't get into the neighborhood. It'd be an awesome place for me to walk my dog. So, just wanted to comment on that.
And I'll bring that to the attention of the Public Works Director.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, thanks. Thanks for your comments, Skylar. Okay.
Thanks for your patience.
Yeah. Sir, this is a oral community, it can't be on, on something on the agenda.
So, I just want to give kudos back to Skylar. He's the one who's taught me to use this software that you see these renderings, and he spent a lot of time teaching me how to use this stuff, which is, thank you, Skylar. And then, I do mean that, I would really like to consider that with the Palmetto, the engineering department doesn't know how to be flexible with these sidewalks. They just think they need to go in, and there is no real code. And they kind of, I have another project, but they kind of refer back to you guys as the ones making these sidewalks. And you guys are kind of thinking they're making the sidewalks. And there's a lot of times where sidewalks are good. I don't think in, I'm not allowed to talk about that, but I would like to figure out how we can make that a better negotiable, because there are times where I'd rather put my resources in sidewalks, like, that would accommodate people, like, it's a big deal down there on Drake in Palmetto. That's a major shopping center. It doesn't have ADA accessibility on the sidewalks down there. And so, I don't know what I'm asking for at this moment, but I'm just letting you guys be aware that engineering keeps thinking you guys are making the decisions, and you're thinking engineering is making these decisions. And that's where we're at. And thank you, Skylar.
Great. Thank you for that comment. Okay, if there's no other members of the public wishing to speak, then we are ready to close this meeting. Commissioner Vatalas?
Motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Cooper?
One second.
Motion and second?
Please vote.
That motion passes five to zero. Thank you.